Village of Salado, Special Board of Aldermen Meeting. Salado, Mass, Building 301 North Stagecoach, Salado, Texas. It's March 27th, 2020, and it is 6:00 PM. Don, roll call.
I may or let the record stand that all members are present with the exception of Alderman Coachman, who is resigned.
So be it. Judge, how are you?
I'm good, sir. Very good. Thanks for being able to be here.
Everything going well for you?
Um, it's been an interesting past couple or three months.
It surely has. Probably wasn't part of what you bargained for.
I don't think it's part of what anybody bargained for.
I tell you, I tell you, it has been. Do you know our alderman and alder lady?
Um, I have been to a couple of your meetings. I, um, I don't know everybody well, but I think I recognize all the meetings.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves to you. And Bobby is not a part of our Board of Aldermen, but he, as you know, he is the commissioner for us. Bobby, let's start with you, and then we'll go to Mike, and then we'll go Rodney, and then we'll go to, uh, Amber.
All right, well, I think, uh, I think I know all of y'all. I'm Bill County, I used to pretty too, but if I don't know you, I look forward to getting to you better anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Mike Cogan, I'm an alderman here at Whistalato, just finishing my first term, and, uh, all of a sudden it got extended for somehow, for some reason.
I'm, uh, Rodney Bell, this is my first term. It's wonderful.
Yeah, I'm John Cole, this is my first term along with Rodney, we got elected at the same time.
I'm Amber Dinkert, it's my third term. At last.
Don, would you like me to introduce my two directors that are here as well? Is that okay?
Looks like we're frozen, but yes, go ahead. Please.
Looks like we're frozen, or y'all are frozen?
No, I think he was, we lost him.
Oh, okay. So, uh, Mayor, I'm Dirk Aaron, the General Manager for Clearwater, but with us today is, uh, I'll let him introduce himself, our Board President and our precinct two director as well.
I'm Leland Gerspock, uh, I'm the mayor. Ran from Salado, with the old red schoolhouse, grew up in Salado, uh, for a long time, lived in Salado and Holland, and I represent Precinct One as the Board President. Go ahead, Gary.
I'm Gary Young, and I've been on the Clearwater Board for, uh, two terms now, and, uh, live in the Salado area, in Springs, and, uh, got interested in really studying the water issues and such, so that we, uh, really have quality water for everybody at all times.
So just for housekeeping, uh, our Board of Directors are elected by County Commission of Precincts, and then we have our fifth one, using at-large, at-large directors. And these two gentlemen have been appointed by the Board to represent them in coalition.
On my screen, it looks like we may have lost Don and the mayor.
Yeah.
And we don't have a mayor pro ca.
The wonders of technology.
Yes. Alderma- Alderwoman Dinkert, why don't you read what we're here for today?
Okay, hang on just a second, I'm gonna grab my packet.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure. Since you're senior of all of us.
True. Okay. So, it's already called, called to, um, order, and we had the roll call, so we're gonna discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed interlocal agreement relating to the anticipated designation of a critical habitat for the Salamander. It is open for discussion.
Hey, Amber?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very quickly, we just had an internet dive here at City Hall, so I'm on the phone now, so, and I think the mayor's in the middle of dialing up to.
Okay, I just opened up for discussion, so that we can start talking.
I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and start real quick, and then, then we can turn it over to the judge, um, 'cause I think he'd like to make a presentation. Uh, this is the item that was on our agenda at last week's meeting, um, and we all kind of know generally the story, and that is, you know, for several years, uh, Bell County, uh, Village of Salado, the groundwater district, and Salado Water Spike Corporation have been working in a coalition format to, uh, do what we can to protect the Salado Salamander and, and its habitat and its spring flow in the Salado, and so, we are heading into a period where U.S. Fish and Wildlife is about to designate a, uh, critical habitat for the Salamander, and, uh, as we've discussed at a couple of meetings recently, uh, there may be a little concern about the area of the habitat that, that Fish and Wildlife might potentially designate, and so, there was some discussion about maybe taking somewhat of a preemptive strike, uh, and, and trying to get with Fish and Wildlife before they designate in August, or propose their designation in August, and give them some of the science that we have, you know, gathered and created over the years regarding the Salamanders' habitat and population, in hopes of trying to make sure that they don't over, uh, overbuild an area as far as the critical habitat. Uh, so, the coalition, uh, you know, took that lead and, and, and moved in that direction, and, uh, made contact with a, uh, environmental consulting firm, because the feeling was that, you know, we needed some expertise in making that presentation to Fish and Wildlife with the data and all that we have and the process that's involved. Uh, we brought that to the Board, uh, of Aldermen to see if the Village of Salado would participate with the other partners in the coalition. Uh, there was considerable discussion at the last meeting, uh, such that we delayed action and put it on this special meeting, uh, for the Board to get more information and to have more discussions. So, Judge Blackburn, who is, who is heading up the Coalition of Entities at this time, uh, is here, and, and Judge, we'd like to welcome you, we all kind of did the introductions before the internet took the dive, but, uh, I'll turn it over to you unless you kind of take the lead at this point.
All right, thank you, Don. Um, first of all, I'm happy to be here, um, I, uh, as, uh, I'm not sure how I got designated the lead on the coalition, but, but I, I'm happy to do that, I'm hap- I'm happy to do that. Um, like, you know, I think a couple of you indicated, uh, your first term, and me too. Um, uh, I took office in January of last year, so I'm in, uh, about a year and five months or so into this, and, uh, there were several things that I knew and understood, or thought I knew and understood about the county, uh, but, I will admit upfront, you know, that I'm a newcomer when it comes to the Salamanders. Um, I'm, I was aware of it, you know, I've been in the county for twenty-five, thirty years, um, and I've been aware of it, uh, certainly from the west and east side of county, but I never really got engaged in it, and, uh, really didn't understand, uh, all the components and all of the work that's going on in this issue, uh, really going back, um, almost a decade now, I think, at least a decade probably. And so, and I, and, and Don mentioned presentation, I really don't have a presentation, what I was gonna do is just make some comments, and then, uh, let anybody else who would like to make any comments make some, but I was really hoping it would be more of a dialogue also, rather than a presentation. I, 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 I kind of stayed away from that. I do a lot of PowerPoint presentations, but I just didn't think that was probably the best, uh, best thing for this discussion, and to keep that as a discussion. But let me highlight a couple of things for you that, that, uh, that were of interest to me and what I've observed this week in going through this. And I just got kind of what I call creep deep into this, uh, the past couple of months. But, as I started trying to build the, the history on this and trying to better understand the pathology, um, it was, it was pretty interesting to kind of see how far back this goes. I mean, in 2004, the Center for Biological Diversity, uh, petitions U.S. Fish and Wildlife to list Salamander as endangered or threatened. So that's almost, uh, sixteen, seventeen years ago, when that process started. Uh, six or seven years rock along, and in 2011, there's a settlement between, uh, the Biol- the Center for Biological Diversity and Fish and Wildlife, and they agreed to develop a listing work plan for multiple species which included Salamanders. Um, and about that same time is when this coalition that, uh, Don's mentioned, and all of you are, again, been a part of for longer than I have, um, was formed, and the village, uh, the Waters- Salado Water Spike Corporation, Clearwater, and Bell County, uh, are all signatories, uh, on this coalition and have been. And I went back and looked at some of the, the documents that we've got here, um, or that I found in some of the files here relating to, why does this coalition exist? I mean, what's the purpose of it? And, and most of these I got from, uh, Tim Brown's file, honestly, I saw, he had some notes in there, and I know he was very active and very engaged, but here's some of the objectives that were listed in some of the notes. It was to gather data and science to better understand the biology of the Salamander as it relates to the geology and hydrology of the Edwards Aquifer. To forge partnerships with Fish and Wildlife, Parks and, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife, U.S. Geological Survey, Baylor University, and private property owners. Maintain the assurance that the conditions do not warrant a more onerous burden of an endangered species listing, and to develop the necessary regulatory tools to accommodate growth and development while at the same time protecting the ecosystem of the Salamander. Again, those were listed in more than one document that I saw, but that was, uh, some things that I saw in, in, in several. And I think also, I got a sense, though, through some of those notes and, and reading some of those, that there was certainly a belief, uh, in 2011, 2012, when the coalition was formed, that a coalition would be a stronger and a better advocate if any one stakeholder acting on their own. Um, a- as well as a belief that all the stakeholders, stakeholders did in fact have an interest in influencing, um, and advocating on the issue. And so I think that's pretty important too, as we talk tonight about what we're doing or what we may do, and where we need to go, but, uh, there was certainly a, a belief that I think has been sustained for the entire time, ten years, um, that, uh, a unified voice is much stronger than a single voice, um, working out there. So in 2012, Fish and Wildlife proposed to list the Salamander as endangered and designated, uh, designate three hundred seventy-two acres at Springs along Salado Creek as critical habitat. That, that was what was on, uh, in the works anyway in 2012 that I can see. In 2014, two years go by, they list the Salamander as threatened, not endangered, and that required them to designate critical habitat within a year. They did not do that. Um, Center for Bio- Biological Diversity steps back in, uh, sues Fish and Wildlife over failure to designate that critical habitat, and in 2020, uh, this year, in February of this year as a matter of fact, and I just, I read, uh, a few days ago, the settlement document, but, uh, the Center for Biological Diversity of U.S. Fish and Wildlife entered into a settlement agreement whereby Fish and Wildlife agrees to issue pro- proposed rules for designating a critical habitat for Salado, Georgetown, Salamanders, August 12th, 2020 this year, with the final rule adopted no later than August 12th, 2021. So, that's, that's, that's in, what, five minutes or four, five minutes, uh, sixteen years worth of highlights of history that I could pull out of what I saw in the files anyway. So what now? And so where we at right now? If, uh, if there's an agreed settlement out there, um, well, we began, I say we, the coalition group, and representatives from coalition, um, and it was first brought to my attention in, uh, mid-March, and I pretty much remember the day, uh, because it was the day before all the COVID stuff started, and, uh, or I'm sorry, the day after that, and I told, uh, some folks, uh, in the conversation that, uh, they were my last, on my calendar for the next two weeks back in March, I didn't have anything with COVID meetings on my calendar for the next, for the following two weeks, and I said, "So you're my last non-COVID meeting, uh, that I can see at least two weeks out." So we started talking in March. The coalition, I think, coalesced around a couple of issues, and two of those points was, or one of those points was, no action by the coalition was not enough, in other words, we needed to do something. Um, and that if we did work on this issue, U.S. and Fish and Wildlife, uh, would likely revert to some previous draft rules and draft positions that they had been floating around several years ago. Um, and I think the second thing that we kind of coalesced around was that we needed some help in doing the science and data, which has been luminous and also very helpful, we believe, uh, but we needed some help in gathering that, uh, crafting, uh, a position, uh, and working on the, uh, the economic, uh, impact statement, or the economism, what's called, but it's called an economic, uh, something, I saw, I had it here a minute ago, but the, uh, uh, but the economic impact document or, or input, economic analysis, that's it, the economic analysis, the help of the economic analysis. And the other thing that we kind of coalesced around also was that the timeline was extremely tight, and that we thought it would take a month or two, uh, to probably get to a point where we could actually get something to present to the stakeholders in order to, uh, move forward with it. And so that's kind of, uh, again, very short order, that's sort of my history, uh, at least since March, um, in terms of what I saw looking backward and then what I saw when it was presented to me.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, Dave.
Let me, I, I got two other points I want to make, or two other general areas that I want to talk about, and then I want to just stop and really just, yeah, questions or, uh, let Clearwater folks or Bobby or anybody, uh, talk, because I really do would prefer some kind of a dialogue here. Um, uh, we did identify a consultant, NRS, a potential consultant that could help us with both crafting, uh, the position statements, uh, doing the economic analysis, and really, uh, doing some advocacy work, um, that we thought was going to be needed, uh, both in front of and during, um, this process. Clearwater did most of the pre- what I call pre-vetting, uh, as it related to the selection of, uh, NRS. Uh, feedback I got was all positive comments, and, and certainly would refer to Dirk, uh, to address that in any more detail if anyone is desired of that. Um, I have contacted, uh, Garrison Command for this, uh, actually talked to two folks there, uh, they gave me positive comments also on, uh, NRS, and I also spoke with Congressman Carter's office, um, and Congressman Carter's office, as y'all know probably better than I do, have been involved in this for, uh, some time also. Uh, they were very aware of, uh, NRS, and they also gave me positive comments associated with, uh, NRS and the work that they did with, uh. Let me talk a little bit about the scope of work, and I, I, my understanding is y'all have seen that or have a copy of that, but, you know, I wanted to really highlight a couple of things. One is that, um, the scope really does involve assisting us in working with Fish and Wildlife as it relates to designation of critical habitat and that economic analysis. Uh, it also is aimed at developing a special forty rule, uh, for Salamanders. Um, it's three phases, eleven tasks, and there are some very specific deliverables with each phase, and there's also, which I think is very important, is what I call go and no-go decision points at each, at the end of each of the three phases. So for example, in phase one, I think there are six taskings that are associated with phase one. Um, informing stakeholders, uh, maybe reaching out to Williamson County is might be appropriate, and I'll come back to that in just a second, I've had some discussions with Williamson County. Um, initiate dialogue between, again, multiple stakeholders, uh, through all the available information, and then, uh, develop a proposed critical habitat designation map. Um, and then, again, advocate that, move that, uh, with Fish and Wildlife to the degree that we can, and then also provide additional information with the use of the economic analysis, which also I think is very important in the process. When we get to, and then there's also one public meeting, uh, prior to the critical habitat designation, uh, that's also listed as task, that task six. We go through all of those tasks at phase one, and then we step back and assess the work product that we have, as well as whether we need to continue those services as the phases going forward, either with that consultant or with another consultant, or with no consultant. Um, that's what I call a go-no-go phase or step, and that's at the end of each one of these phases. Total cost for all of the phases is $200,000, uh, phase one is $40,000, two, phase two is $90,000, phase three is $70,000. Uh, the proposal, uh, the thought is to split the cost four ways equally among the four coalition members. Uh, as y'all may already know, Bell County and Clearwater have already authorized monetary participation, and, and we're ready to move forward, um, with the process. Let me, uh, close with this, uh, these three or four comments, uh, at least in terms of just prepared comments. Um, I, I would, I would say that since learning about the settlement between the Center for Biological Diversity and Fish and Wildlife, the coalition really has been actively engaged in this, uh, over the past sixty days or so, uh, and, or, and the representatives of the coalition have been engaged with it. There's one thing that is really keen on everybody's mind right now, and that is that it's, uh, from today, I believe it's seventy-seven days until the proposed rule be issued. And so, our, our timeline is really condensed, and we, we probably can move very quickly. The ability to engage and influence Fish and Wildlife over the next thirty to sixty days is also viewed, I think, by, by, by us as critical too. I think we believe that an outside consultant is going to be beneficial to us in this process. I think we believe that attempting to engage Williamson County would also be beneficial for both counties. Um, at a minimum, that engagement is to ensure that we don't present conflicting positions. My hope is that we can actually collaborate and cooperate. Uh, I've had a couple of discussions with Williamson County over the past, uh, couple of weeks, and, uh, had prepared to have more, but I kind of put that, and was supposed to have another one this week, but I kind of put that on pause, uh, since y'all were on pause, uh, and wanted to have some conversation. So I've, I've kind of stayed down on that just a little bit, uh, and will stand down until we're kind of all on the same page. Um, but I think Williamson County is important, again, at a minimum, to make sure that we're not on the end of conflicting positions. We may have different tactics or different approaches to how we might address this, but we certainly don't want them advocating something that's, uh, going to be viewed as adversarial or competing with a position that we were placed in, and that's my primary goal, but I would also like to get them on board, if you can, uh, and maybe even as a financial participant, uh, in this process. I think the coalition representatives also believe that, uh, just as I read a moment ago, that in, uh, 2011 and 2012, a unified stakeholder approach is our best opportunity to influence the process, and that, and to get an outcome that both protects the Salamander habitat, but also allows for growth and development to occur. Congressly, I think the coalition representatives believe that if we are not unified in our approach, that it would be detrimental to all of our stakeholders, and that, uh, in fact, some of our stakeholders, and I would put Bell County in this camp, would probably just sit this out if we're not unified. If, if we're not kind of all of one accord, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't see the county being, uh, a player or a participant. Let me say one more thing. Um, as a newcomer to the group, in terms of the coalition efforts and, and being directly engaged in the process, I do have a suggestion, um, and, and I've kind of seen this over the past month or so, but I think we probably ought to have some sort of, uh, and I call it an executive group, but we can call it whatever we want, an advisory group, a working group, it doesn't matter what you call it, but I think if we engage a consultant, I think we need a group of people to provide oversight and direction to that consultant, uh, and, and to do that on a fairly, uh, intensive basis, to make sure the consultant, whoever it is, is working exactly the way we want them to work, and working on the product that we want them to work. Um, I think that working group should also provide recommendations back to the government bodies as might be needed, uh, for whatever reasons, but I think that's the conduit back. I think some of our organizations already have two representatives on there, for example, I'm, I'm a, a representative from Bell County, and Bobby's the representative also from Bell County. I think Clearwater has two representatives, two elected officials designated, and my suggestion would be that the village, as well as the Water Spike Corporation, if you haven't already, and maybe you have, this is maybe part of my ignorance, but if you haven't, I would suggest that there be a couple of elected officials designated to work with this working group, uh, again, in part to help us manage, uh, and provide direction to, uh, the consultant and so forth, and I think that'd be very helpful in more ways than one. As I said when I started, I've gotten sort of creep deep in, uh, all these issues over the past few months, and I've kind of appreciate really all the work that, uh, Leland you have done, uh, for several years, not months, but several years, and I think you've done a tremendous job of gathering the science and the data and the information to support what I believe will ultimately become a very defensible, uh, position, both with regard to the critical habitat, uh, as well as, uh, special forty permanent, that's, that's my thing. I would also applaud the fact that the coalition really exists. I, I think to have a group of stakeholders, uh, whoever they are, a group of stakeholders to be, uh, to, to, to hold together and stay together for ten years, for over a decade, is truly remarkable, uh, and that's a, that's really a testimony to all of you and all of those who've been involved in that. I truly do hope we can remain together on this, um, and continue the good work that has been done prior to us. That's really all the comments that I had to make. Um, I'll be happy to pause here for a second and see if, uh, Dirk or Leland or anybody else, uh, on the line that has been involved in the coalition discussions at this time.
Just, you just speak.
This is Leland Gerspock, I'd like to go ahead and make some formal comments for Clearwater. I think I'm the only person around that's been on it since day one, since back in 2004, when they first come down with this thing, and I was disheartened at the time that it would even come up. The coalition has fostered a synergistic relationship that was first and foremost committed to developing a legal and defensible resolution that protects businesses, private landowners, public entities in Bell County. Uh, we have citizen buy-in and trust. We agreed from the beginning in 2012 to conduct an ongoing science-based effort to better understand the ecosystem as a whole, and we have done that. I would be willing to say that over the last fifteen years, we've probably put a couple of million dollars into science to help understand the Edwards and the Trinity. We always want to avoid the tedious actions by being a voice of reason and discernment before the final critical habitat is being certain, being verbal. We need to, uh, finish that course down in this narrow window of opportunity. We support formal efforts over the next eighteen months that could conclude with a full de-listing of the Salamander in, in Bell County. That's our, our end result, is we would like to have a de-listing. We need to understand the underside and provide defensible scientific and legal positions. Clearwater stands firm that if we don't come together at this time, then there never was a coalition. We feel we must win this war with a unified voice, which is always been the goal. Clearwater's regulatory authority can address the water quality threat. To accomplish this, we upgrade, we upgraded by installing the gold standard spring flow gaseous with USGS of Willamette property for more than thirty-five thousand upfront costs. We spend more than fifteen thousand dollars annually to have it maintained by the USGS. And by the way, this gives Salado a free early warning system for flooding, and I think it's coming handy to last flood as soon as it's wet. We can dismantle our regulatory design based on protecting spring flow. This changed our regulatory frameworks by reverting to protection methods faced solely on water level levels and index wells, that the springs are no longer metric within our authority. Clearwater makes this change, it can put us on the crosshairs between Judge Jackson and Willamette. We'll be happy if spring flow in Bell County is, will no longer be protected. She's already upset that it has not occurred in Williamson, Northern Travis County. Please keep in mind, we have no authority, and I represent no authority over land use or land development to protect the water quality. That's you on the council, the village and the county. At the end of the day, this entire issue and shared vision was to prevent the funneling. Excessive federal oversight, we want, you know, we want to control our own destiny, we want to get the facts and best, the facts, best available science and package that interpretation does so what? Shared strategy. We also stand, stand firm that we want eventually to attain a de-listing of the Salamander. We invented the consulting firm, they are available, trustworthy, they have a one-hundred percent success rate. What else needs to be done? The scope of work, guided and discussed by Judge Blackburn. The scope of work guided in the skill by Judge Blackberry is to help us navigate the feds, understand the factors and science in a defensible manner. We also feel a third party advocate of our shared efforts in a succinct manner would be our desire at this time. The specificity of the scope of work in phase one should be understood by all. Clearwater is pleased that the judge has put language in place at the end of each phase to assess if we individually or collaboratively want to go forward in the phase two and three. I respectfully ask each of you to take all the facts and history into account and to approve your continued participation in this endeavor. Thank you, sir.
Can we ask questions now?
Absolutely.
Okay, this is Cole. I got a question. Has anybody reviewed the entire data from the Fish and Wildlife to know exactly which way they're coming from?
Yes, we have reviewed that and what they, what they are hanging their hat on because they, they don't have a scientific team to analyze it. They're very limited. That's why they wait to see and be forced to do it. They're really not bad. They just don't have the, the bandwidth, the staff to go deep into it. And so that map, that big purple map that was in the Salado paper, which I showed to you all on the sixteenth, was actually arbitrarily drawn from a previous study. And that's what they're going to hang their hat on if they don't get, during this window of time in where we have standing, something that would change or, or, or be scientifically defensible and legally defensible to downsize that. The big purple area is not surface designation, but it's the geology. The small yellow circles in the paper are the land surface. And we feel like where their own people, US Fishes, and the fact USGS is a gold standard scientific community on water quality, that with somebody pulling all this together, I've already, just getting the data together took, of our own and US Fishes. US Fish actually doesn't generate data, the Texas Parks and Wildlife does. The consultants have actually started a process of putting this together, knowing that we were on a short timeline. And they, as well as Clearwater, noticed that Texas Parks and Wildlife, whom are also an authority that we have to satisfy, questioned the validity of the proposed critical habitat back in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. So now we have a scientific evidence that we can downsize that. It'd be much less onerous, but it will have to be done in a way that is packaged for that. The other thing that US Fish forgets, or many people have, is that Solana Ranch went into a conservation in the evening upon the beginning of this. And so Kirk and his son essentially signed a contract and were compensated financially and of tax benefits to in perpetuity give two hundred and fifty something acres of, in perpetuity protection of Salamander and Bell County. That will stay for more than a year. And that in itself is us enough comfort that if we can find with our science, that being Dr. Joe Yelton's flood patterns, that being where the salamanders are at, but more importantly, where the salamanders are not at. And also with USGS's water quality assessment. There is no real threat. Water quantity flowing has been recognized as, as a adequate regulatory mechanism. They, they, if we can package it in a way where they understand what the village has committed in terms of millions of dollars to a sewer plant and decommissioning of septic. The baseline data is already of ours is beginning to show water quality change immensely already in the creek. And so that means that we have enough scientific data. We just need to navigate that through the federal onus. What I like about the process that the judge laid out, and I spoke heavily to the, to Leland, because this is where we were at before, was an executive committee that he described that would meet in a defined, ongoing basis where the science team answers questions to our consultants. They began to map scenarios. Then they bring the basis of that scenario defendable to both the, the executive committee that the judges were executive group, the judges described, as well as our scientific team. And then work with the community, because if you don't have the community, that meaning the landowners whom Don has a list of who those people are in this defined one, and those people need to know the facts so they can weigh in with comments after August twelfth, where the comments are succinct, they're defendable, they're scientifically, and they're defensible from a legal standpoint. The other thing I know about US Fish, if we set back and don't do anything, they're going to expand that pattern to areas with recharge. And recharge does not, is not habitat for the salamander. And we proved that in our science. But unless we package that and put it in a way, they just don't have the bandwidth. They need to put, this is where the success of communities like ours have gone down a path of providing science, but an intuitive understanding and analysis packaged in a way that speaks to the breadth of what we want, opposed to just generalizing it. We have the science, well, what's the so what of the science? So that's a great question because we asked them when, when, when the coalition members met, Don was on the call. We actually had our scientific team brief all of us as well. We invited the Parks and Wildlife Department. This was in, on April twentieth. We also had members from US Fish listening in on the specificity of the science. And that's when we got feedback that they are intrigued by it and, and welcomed a packaged understanding prior to the time. Keep in mind, they have an August twelfth deadline, but for that to get to Washington DC and be posted August twelfth, they really have a, a mid-July deadline that, and as we speak, they're looking at it and assuming if they don't hear something from us or anybody that has standing, which is only the coalition at this point, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, I, I just have one, one small question, then I'll, then I'll shut up. You mentioned the go and no, the go and no-go checkpoint during this process. And I'm sure that you've already bounced those checkpoints against where Fish and Wildlife is coming from. What are the odds of successfully going through those checkpoints? Or what are the odds of us being, being shut down in, in this stroke?
I'll, I'll try to take a stab at answering part of that question. I'm not sure if I can answer all of it. From my standpoint, the, what I call the go-no-go points are really for us as a coalition to step, again, two things. The value of the product that we've received, the deliverable that we've gotten from the consultants at each one of the go-or-no-go points. We assess that, see if it's quality as well as the, as well as the effectiveness of what has been delivered to us. Are we, are, yeah, are we getting what we want out of this? And the second option, or, or the second reason for that go-or-no-go point is to assess the other side of the table. Again, not just what we're getting, but what, what, what impact this has had on Fish and Wildlife or on any entity that we're trying to get to move to our position on this whole process. For example, again, working with those stakeholders that Dirk mentioned, which are multiple stakeholders for this process, including Williamson County. I, I think it's really important to try to manage all of those things as this moves forward over the next sixteen, seventeen months or so at least in terms of developing, or, or ending up where we want to go. But the go-no-go is really a point for us as a coalition to decide whether or not we think we're getting value.